We couldn't find the meeting. So. It's.
All right, so I would like to call the meeting to order. This is Wednesday, 15th. I've amended some of the order. I just want to announce that that part.
To the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justic.
All members of the select board of committee. And we have a few. Parents on the attendance, and we do have a. We have two public hearings on the agenda. Start. I'm specified, so there's one. So we don't want. What is here for that? So we're going to wait all the way till we end.
Signal.
They saw him pop on for a minute.
Okay.
He just put his ears on.
New features, I guess.
All right, so now we see Jeremy, and now I see us, because I know I saw that the camera was on, but I couldn't see them. Of us. Waiting that we can see the attendees.
Okay, how's that? You hear us, Jeremy?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Elena was a little bit broken up for me, but I can hear you.
How about now?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Okay, that's much better.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so we've opened the meeting, so we haven't really started yet. So Jeremy, I was just mentioning to people that we have our public hearings. One scheduled for 6:35 for Vanderbilt Farm and one for 6:40 with Verizon, New England. And I was just sharing that we expect to be continuing the Verizon, New England hearing for another date. But do you have a date yet when that will be for anyone who's here for that?
Yeah, we continue it by now, and we don't yet have the agreement. I've been promised it for next week, but until I actually get the agreement, I wouldn't want to advertise the date. So no, we don't yet. We don't yet have a date, possibly February 5th, and hopefully February 5th, but that's not for certain.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's a little bit hard to hear you, Jeremy. I don't know, so we'll, we'll, we'll let you know, because I know there are a few things that you're talking about at tonight's agenda. So hopefully, if you can hear us, we can fill in as best as possible, so for those of us who are more familiar with some of the things that you'll be talking about. All right, so I think I'm going to. We're getting very close to 6:35, so I'm, I'm not going to take any items out of order, because what we have to do is wait another minute, and then we can reopen that hearing. Or less than a minute, if it turns out. Okay. So I would be looking for a motion.
I moved to reopen and continue with 6:35 public hearing to review the application for a father's series pouring, pouring permit, serving malt beverages, and an entertainment license and a change of powers.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Right, all in favor?
I'm going to abstain and recuse myself as an authority.
Okay, thank you. And I will disclose again that I have a friendly social relationship with a number of Vanderbilt family members, but I have no business or professional interest in the farm. So I guess I would like to invite the, anyone here, sorry, anyone from Vanderbilt Farm and Winery would like to join us at the table? I know there may be other people here for this, but yes, please, if you could join us and if you could introduce yourself. And I think if there are people online.
Yes, so my parents are online. You can see them there. Casey and Susan Vanderbilt. And I thought that our lawyer was going to be here. Is he on?
He might be on the next.
Two? Possibly. Yep, Frank Deluna, that is our attorney, and he is here as well. He's just going to listen in, and if you guys have any legal questions that you want to ask him, you're welcome.
Great, thank you. And I would like to start by saying, thank, thank you, everyone, for coming back tonight, and thank you for the previous public hearing. We really appreciated hearing the voices of so many of our community members, and I think it is very, it's important at these hearings that many sides of the issue get discussed. And so this is an opportunity for us to address some of the questions that were raised at the previous hearing. So I think, Jeremy, do you want to, like, start us off, or?
Yeah, certainly. I hope you can hear me. Okay, I am a little forced, and I'm on microphone, so if you need me to repeat anything, or dial in on my phone instead, I'm happy to do that. So there were essentially three questions we were looking at here. Application for an entertainment license, application to extend Sunday hours by one hour, and an application for a 19H beer pouring permit. I sent a memo to the select board that kind of covered a bunch of those. The Vandervolts have, the applicants have submitted a revised entertainment application, which includes some more detail than the original one did. The change of hours, the request has been refined to just say the one-hour extension on Sunday, and then included in the package is their current pouring permit, which has kind of those elongated hours on other days. And they're just looking to have Sunday hours be extended by one hour, and the applicant can talk a little bit more about the rationale. And then the 19H, so the 19H combines the former brewery license with the former winery license. The Vanderbilt Farm currently holds both of those licenses with the state, and what they need is a, is a pouring permit on the local level to be able to combine those, that 19C brewery and that 19B winery into what's called the 19H, so they can serve both wine and beer at concurrent premises. And then what that application also includes is the addition of a loft in a barn to be part of the definition of premises where the pouring is allowed. And so the building inspector, the fire inspector have both been there, have both given their comments on what needs to happen to the space, or what revisions need to happen, and what, what they need to do to be able to sign off. So that's currently in the works. There was a, there was a question on retail sales to go for off-premise consumption, and that's already covered by the winery, by the 19B and by the 19C brewery permit. The, the farm is allowed to sell retail off-premise to go as part of having that licensing, so there's no action needed to the local licensing authority. And there was a question relative to zoning. So I spoke with town council and the planning department, and so the table of uses allows agricultural uses, and it spells out a number of particular things. And then the right to farm by law defines farming as including agricorism, farm-based recreational activities, and provided that the activities are related to marketing the agricultural outputs or services of the farm. So our right to farm law includes agricorism, and then our zoning table of uses includes farming allowable in rural areas. So the zoning question is fine. The parking question, I talked to, parking and traffic, I talked to Chief Curzy, who's also online tonight, who could take some of your questions, too, about increased traffic. They're going to monitor it, you know, kind of the same as they would any other place that has kind of an increase. And then in terms of parking, there are no increased parking requirements for adding a brewery license to a winery license. Any parking that's across the street would be, that's a separate question, because that would be a separate license and a separate premise, and, and so that, that parking is not intended to be for parking on the opposite side of the street, or intended to stay on the same side. So those are the questions that I, that I kind of tracked down in between the last meeting and this, and the applicant here that kind of refined some of those answers, but that's, that's the fact pattern that we're working with.
Thank you, Jeremy, and I know if there was any part that someone had trouble hearing, I know that the sound quality was a little poor. I could make out most of it, but I know I've also read the memo, so I will put it out there if anybody wants to repeat a part. Did the, did the board hear that? Okay, okay. And then I would say, like, if, if any members as a public would like us to repeat any part of that, so there were things related to the entertainment license and change of hours, the 19H pouring permit, and some zoning questions, as well as retail off-premises, description of premises, and parking and traffic. So we can also answer more questions as the hearing progresses. So, so thank you for that summary, Jeremy, and thank you for this very helpful memo, as well as the work that you have done with the applicant to refine these applications, I think. Yeah, so I think, I guess I will put it to the board. Do any of you have any further questions at this time? Yes?
Well, I mean, you had to ask for a general sense of your expected occupancy, for the overall of the lot. I saw a reference to 24 in the loft, I think, but I wasn't sure there was any.
So in terms of the loft, Rob?
I have no, in terms of the whole space, because I understand the parking question has been somewhat answered, but I think the fact that you've already said the, the parking across the street is not part of this discussion, I would assume no overflow parking would go across the street, so therefore you need to have parking to handle the occupancy you planned for on the primary premises, is what I would say.
Yeah, sure.
And the ask was, that I asked was, do you have a sense of occupancy? Because right now, with the previous license, there was no occup, number of people sighted with the original winery.
Sure. I was told that I, well, I don't, I was told that I was not allowed to determine occupancy.
Okay.
That that was something that was determined by the building inspector, I guess. I don't know if you can put an occupancy on the farm. I mean, yeah, we have the parking lot, but we also park in open fields and other spots that we have, you know, on the property.
But I mean, you have a set number of tables that can seat potentially four to eight people, what have you.
Yeah, for sure.
So you're coming general range, and then I would say, well, you then need, based on 100 people, you might need 20 parking spaces.
Yeah.
I have no issue, I have, having been there, I think your parking is fine. I just want to close out field of questions.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we have about 75 picnic tables. They don't always fill up. Sometimes they do. Get created with. I don't know.
But there'd be no overflow to the other side of the street?
We have not been told that we are not allowed to overflow to the other side. Somebody, I don't.
Got somebody joining.
I, I don't know what I can say about overflow parking on the other side of the street. It's under litigation with the town, and so I don't think I can say definitively one way or the other. My understanding is that while it's under litigation, we're. Fit, but. That's my understanding. You're welcome. If you wanted to, like, for, I know you, you mentioned that your attorney joined you as well. I don't know, but if you wanted to check in, you're, you're certainly welcome to. But I think, I don't know, Mike, does. I don't, I just, I don't, I think while it's under litigation, I don't think that there's a, an answer. I think, right, we sort of, for the purposes of this hearing, that parking lot is a separate issue, I think.
Yeah, but for the purpose of this, understanding the volume, number of people that will be there, and the parking, it, there, there was a gray area in the first hearing. And I'm not saying you needed to, I mean, the, the ask was what we were planning, not what the technical occupancy was, so that was an ask. And I think it's a fair ask, because I think other people had raised it in the first hearing. And in the first hearing, basically, it was a separate issue in that it was not part of this discussion, so unless it serves as overflow parking, then it becomes part of this discussion. You know? I just want to make sure there's enough parking for the number of people they intend to be able to serve, right?
Right, I mean, I think what we're proposing isn't that we want more people to come to the farm at any given time. I think what we're proposing is that we want to stay relevant in terms of what other businesses are doing. You know, if we only ever offered, like, a glass of wine in a picnic table, people would stop coming. It would get boring for them. And part of owning and operating a business is being able to, you know, stay current and have, you know, different offerings for people and make them want to come. So I don't think we're proposing that it's going to be more people than it's been in the past. I think it's more just about staying, staying relevant. Thank you. And does, do you have more questions? Mike, does that answer your question?
I mean.
For that with the information that we have available?
Yeah, there's. That was close, is what I'm hearing.
And I think in Jeremy's memo, that the proposed additional beer pouring does not affect the parking requirements of the existing facility. So, and I think also.
The, the, the addition of a loft and a structure potentially increases the number of people that could then now be, there, that's all.
Sure.
So that's, that's, you are increasing capacity. That's all.
Okay.
And that's, was the genesis of the question the first time around. I just want to say that I, I think I said this first time. I'm actually in favor of this getting done. I just want to get this done in a way that's balanced between all the stakeholders we've heard ask questions.
Agreed.
So.
And if, if I can just add on to that, my, my question really wasn't in regard of total numbers. It was really the discussion about the new spaces or moving the indoor space from, you know, where folks used to walk in, which is not really where staff works, and then that loft.
Yeah.
So what is the, what is the proposed capacity of that loft area? Because I just want to make clear, you know, I don't think anybody wants to go in the loft when it's a good day.
Yeah.
Everybody wants to be outside the picnic table, and I've seen people sitting in chairs they brought and everything else, so the number of picnic tables isn't really a limit. I don't think there's an, an issue with outdoor seating or capacity. I'm just wondering about the, the new space in the loft and making that if there wasn't climate, whether people wanted to go inside, and what the, what the capacity was in that.
So I think regardless of, of a rainy day, less people would come to the farm than, like, on a sunny day.
Sure.
So I don't think, I don't anticipate that the spaces would be used at the same time, like. We've always.
Yeah, people would run inside if it's.
We've been an outdoor facility. We're set up to, to function outdoors, so I think that that's what's proposed. And in terms of, can I share my screen?
You should be able to, in theory.
Believe, depending on the settings. Okay, great. I'm fine with you sharing your screen. Yes, if it works, great. All right, hang on.
Is that you? There you go.
There we are. Okay, let me just skip ahead to the section that I prepared about the loft. Okay, so. There's the proposed loft space, and you can see it, it's at the end of the parking lot. Hang on. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. And so there it is. It's the building at the end of the parking lot. It's the upstairs room of the loft, and there's a couple of the indoor pictures. So what's going on with the loft? I know there's questions about it and occupancy. I just wanted to go over the things that we have done in terms of that. We definitely got you guys a more detailed description of the premise. We, I know you've all, in your packet, got the occupancy permit that we have for the space. Jeremy and I both spoke with the building inspector and the fire chief regarding any additional updates for the space. The building inspector was there last week, and the fire department was there yesterday. They both inspected the space in the past week, and I'm just waiting to hear back from the building inspector about any required updates and occupancy numbers. So I don't have the occupancy numbers, but I know that these aren't made to get those to me. We're happy to make, you know, updates that are required.
I see a recommendation here that, that the building inspector encourages us to vote on the matter contingent upon making the required updates.
Well, that's me, that's very, thank you.
Well, well, but, but he's, well, he's. I understand that, but from what I understand, none of these really hinge on giving that loft space ability. I mean, that's, that's kind of even, an occupancy permit has nothing to do with an entertainment license extending the hours, or the pouring license, which are the three things that we're really discussing here right now.
Right.
So even if I was curious about. Relevant to the matter at hand.
Sure.
So that was great that you gave the update.
Yes, well, I think, I think people are curious about it, because it's, because it was mentioned as a new space.
I just wanted to make.
So I think it helps people understand the request as a whole.
And I wanted to show that I listened to what you guys said, and I've done my homework, me and Jeremy.
Yes.
And we're trying to, you know, answer the questions and move forward with this.
And I think, I think ultimately, that is the goal of this board in doing a hearing like this, is to, right, take, take comment from the public, ask questions, and then make, you know, address the concern. So I, I do appreciate all of the work that you've put in and that Jeremy has put in, and as well as our fire chief and building inspector, as well as all of the, the public who have given their comments, that have, have definitely helped refine these, these applications. So, so, right, so the application, so just, right, a reminder, we've got, right, as, as Mike Marley pointed out, we have our, the three questions, which is the, the pouring permit to, to add malt beverages, the entertainment license, and, and the change of hours. And the change of hours, I think, just to reiterate, that's a very minimal change of hours, I believe. It's adding one hour at the beginning of Sundays. Do I understand that?
That is correct. So when we talked to the A B C C, they just basically clarified for us the difference between off-premise and on-premise sales, off-premise being selling bottles to go. That is something that's regulated by the state. We can basically be sell bottles to go the same hours, days, times, as packaged stores. And then the on-premise hours, which was the pouring, that's set by you guys. The current license says that we can open at noon on Sunday, and the proposed hours is that we can open at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday. So, yep, just one hour we're looking for right now.
So that's, I mean, that is a, you know, relatively, I think, straightforward resolution to those questions. And then as far as the entertainment license, I know that was also refined quite a bit.
You're not going in order of my.
I'm sorry, yes.
There we go. Okay. So, yes, I did update this with Jeremy. We added some more details in terms of days and times.
And so the total number of.
It's, it's about 20 days.
Okay.
If we did it every single day, we were open.
Right.
Which we're not planning on doing. So that's that.
And then actually, I mean, would you mind just reading that? Like, I know it's, for those, those.
Yeah.
Those of us who don't have it in front is kind of hard to read. So this specifically, it's Friday.
Fridays, April to October, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., and then there's two Saturdays that do, like, a blueberry to cranberry festival. I don't know if I would do music on those days. I might, so I added them to the permit. So it's a Saturday in July and a Saturday in October. We would be open from 11:00 to 5:00, and so we're open about half a year, half a 52, 21 plus two days, 23 days. And like I said, we're not planning to do it.
Right, and I believe, right, there were, there were additional, there was additional information about the level of application.
Sure. So I did my best, me and Jeremy, but this is, he gave some pointers, and this is what I came up with. I did try and dig a little bit deeper into what some of the other businesses in town have written for their entertainment licenses, because I do feel like there's some people that are doing similar things to what we are offering. But I wasn't able to get my hands on them, so I did my best. I tried to listen to the feedback of the board in terms of amplification, not making it too loud. This is what I came up with. I hope it's your liking. So I think this will be, when we open the, open this up to public comment, we will, like, I just want to give people a chance to take in this new information.
Sure.
So, so does the board, anyone on the board, have any questions?
I just want to make, make sure you understand. So the, so your, your request is for all of the Fridays between, from, from the beginning of April to the end of October, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. each Friday in April, May, June, July, August, September, and October, for four hours each Friday from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then in addition to that, on Saturday, July 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then Saturday, October 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Not all Saturdays, just those two Saturdays.
Yes, correct.
But all the Fridays from, for those four hours, potentially. It might not happen every week, but.
Right.
Okay, and then it's basic, it's saying here that, that the musical styles may include acoustic, country, or jazz. Levels will be kept at moderate and comfortable levels, ensuring minimal disturbance to neighboring properties. Minimal amplification will be used primarily for acoustic instruments and vocals. Live music will be performed in our main picnic area in the loft or on the loft lawn. And I know that's just what it says up there, but I just am reading it out there.
Yeah, I think, I think that's helpful. I think it's sometimes hard for people in the audience to read. This one I can read from here, so. So does, does anyone on the board have any questions for, about this? And then going out of, out of. I'm ready. So that, that's, there's a question about the pouring permit. Oh, yes. Which, so I believe that's the third, sorry, that's the first on here, but the third one, the way I'm listing them. So, and that was the addition to add the, the malt beverage pouring condition to the wine. So they. The farm already has the wine pouring permit.
So the request for the pouring is to in, to increase the ability or add the ability of, of craft beer, not produced by the farm, but. Right.
Correct. So the first step was obviously to get the federal and state licenses, which we've done. The next step is for the local licensing authority to issue a pouring permit for the farm brewery. I pulled up some of the legislation from the state regarding farm breweries. I know there was questions directly related to us selling beer that possibly we hadn't produced ourselves. So the legislation goes into that a little bit in Section 8. It states that the brewery can sell on its property malt beverages produced by or for the brewery and sold under its branding, which is what we are planning to do. So that's the legislation from the state. So this, so produced, so produced for the brewery, so this would be, someone would make it for us.
All right.
I'm going to have to consult. Yeah, it's all set, so.
Just want to clarify with this conversation. Is that already taken care of?
It's, it's all on the amendment application.
But my assumption is that. But my assumption is that this license may give you the ability to, you know, to allow people to consume, you know, to sell it for them to consume. But until they get an occupancy permit, you know, they can consume it outside on the premises, but they can't consume it inside until you get the occupancy for that area.
Yeah, so it's actually a two-step process, like issue the brewery pouring permit and then issue the.
Hi, this is Jeremy. I think I'm having the same issue as Karen is. There's large swaths of audio that are being cut out from Lisa, Elena, and that's out of the table.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, so I will attempt to speak more loudly. I don't know if that helps. So, well, so, but I just, my question is. So this, this is the central.
Yeah, what's happening is Lisa's laptop lighting up and then you can see her, see how I'm listening. It's alarming out.
So, yeah.
I see.
Ah, it's going.
Okay, so is your, is your microphone?
My phone's not on according to the meeting and that's the confusion. Some sort of type of.
I see.
Do you want me to leave?
Well, I think maybe, I guess the question, how about is, if there are any more files that need to be shared? And then maybe if you, your laptop leaves. First of all, the, the audio issue. So I just give you, if there are other documents to.
You guys have completely dead air right now with anybody who's watching. I don't know why, we can't even hear Elena at all, it's just dead.
Okay, it's because I logged off.
That, that is possible. Um. Why don't you, why don't you just log out of that machine, Katie? And just log back in as yourself, Katie will keep running in the back.
Yeah. I took over the.
Um.
I'm gonna send Katie my slides. Someone must be still on the meeting.
I just, well, I just turned my microphone on so that there would be some kind of feed so people would know that.
Thank you.
Still working.
It's, it's Lonnie here. I can jump in remotely and see if I can help out up here if you think it would help.
How do you hear it on your sound?
Actually, the turntable, I believe.
I did see Lonnie on.
I just saw Lonnie. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm not sure if you can hear me, but I can jump in remotely and see if I can help. I'm jumping in now.
Where is this microphone tied into which, into that machine? Okay.
The same problem with the 1800s.
We got a dial-up connection.
There's a mutual volume.
So. Keys. You're a fan, so. Yeah.
All right, so now can people who are online hear me speaking?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Oh, thank you. All right, so I guess, Karen, me, I will ask you, since, like, are there any persons that we should mention again for those who are online and, and may have missed some points?
Um, yeah, can you, can you hear me a little bit better now?
Yes.
Than before? Okay. I ditched the headphones and I'm just on, on, on a phone now. Um, no, I think, I think you covered the entertainment, the, the change of hours, the pouring permit and its implications. Uh, I covered the zoning before. Um, if my audio was, my audio was poor, just to reiterate, the right-to-farm bylaw defines farming as including agritourism and activities related to marketing the agricultural output or services of the farm. And then our zoning table of uses allows farming in rural residential. Um, so those things kind of tied together means that, means that this is allowed on a zoning level. I will say, um, there was a little bit discussion before, and again, it broke up, so I couldn't quite hear it, about the 19H and produce where the beer is produced. So the ABCC defines 19H as applying if the beer is produced by or for the farm. So they can produce it on-premise, they can contract or, or, you know, have someone else produce the beer for them, but then it's sold under their own label only on their premise. That's the, that's what they can do there. So it's by or for. Uh, but I think, I think everything else is pretty well covered.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate the patience of everyone here and, uh, online and in the room for, uh, patients as we deal with our technical issues. So it is important that everybody be able to hear all of this information. This is a public hearing. Uh, so thank you for your patience. And, okay, so I guess are there additional questions from the board this time?
Just, just to reiterate, what I'm hearing is we're adding, you're adding functionality to what you already have. You do not see, this doesn't necessarily drive an increase in number of patrons.
Correct.
So therefore your, what we call occupancy is not going to change. And therefore the parking situation you have in place today, it's a moot point, is what I heard. Is that a fair summary?
That's correct.
Okay.
Although I will add that in Jeremy's memo, the police chief thinks there may be increases in traffic potentially. And so, uh, they will be monitoring the traffic to make sure.
To that point, I mean, everything, to me, it's not the business model. To me, it's about making sure that it's more, I'd say it's more nuisance things like traffic, public safety, parking, things like that. It's not what you're doing on the premises. I think that'll make sense.
Sure.
Um, but one thing, and it's tangential, but I would ask Chief Kersey to look at the speed limit on that street. I posted 30 right now, I think.
Love a slower speed.
No, I mean, I was on the board when they, oh.
Yeah.
I, I was on the board when they put it up and I was surprised it was 30. I fully expected 25. I didn't understand 30, but I mean, we can revisit that, Chief Kersey.
Kersey, yeah, do you, are you able to join us and weigh in on this question?
Yeah, so right now it's, um, it's, it's 30 just based on state, state law of master and a law. So, uh, we could maybe do a special, we had both that in a, on a few meetings ago, annual town meeting, that we do have the authority to lower some streets to 25, so we could look at that. Um, I'm not so worried about the speed. I just, um, it's a residential area, it's a small road with a new type of business. I mean, I know it's not a new business, but you're adding a different element to it that's going to bring a different, um, more clientele there. As we had a speaker speak at the, at the first hearing, saying that, you know, he wanted to see beer there and he's going to go come there and his family's going to go there, which means we're going to have an increase based on that just by the people who came to the hearings to support it. Um, so we just got to make sure, and I, I talked to Lisa about this, that we got to make sure that fire trucks can get in and out of there. Um, if there's an emergency, we need to get ambulance in there. We need to get a fire truck in there, there's a fire. So we need to make sure that you rearrange parking in such a way that we can get large vehicles in there in case something happens for public safety. Um, we don't want to see parking on the road, so we'll monitor that. And if there's an increase, you know, that's something the highway department needs to look at too, just for road maintenance. Um, it's a narrow road, it's hard to, um, I walk on the road, it's hard to walk on the road without getting hit. Um, so never mind just driving on the road and passing cars. Um, there's a lot of things that we should look at, um, long-term if, if the business is expanding, just to make sure we can cover it between your business and between the town side.
Thank you, yeah.
Just to be clear in terms of this hearing, everything, I agree with everything I just heard from public safety perspective, but those would be follow-ons for the board and the appropriate departments to look at, not necessarily a mitigating factor to our vote tonight if we take one. Is that fair? Or should we be considering what we just heard before we take a vote?
I think, I mean, we, we don't know, adding, right, adding this one change to the pouring license, we don't actually know how it will affect business. So it's somewhat speculative, but I think that it, uh, but it sounds like there is a plan for monitoring the effects on, of traffic on that road and I think also for the access for public safety vehicles. So I think those are the points.
So what I heard is there needs to be a plan.
There needs to be.
That in place.
Uh, yeah, so we do work closely with, um, in terms of, we have the food trucks there. Um, we follow all like the fire safety regulations. There is a, um, clear path for fire trucks to get in. We've, um, had several instances, ambulances come, we always are able to get them in, no problem, anywhere they need to go. Um, so I do feel like we're, we're aware and, um, it's never been an issue.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Uh, Jeremy, any, any questions or comments for us?
Um, no, I think, I think the chief covered his concerns. Um, I've laid mine out and the responsibilities of the board. Um, you know, the board has the ability to reasonably regulate. Um, and I think the entertainment license and, um, is, is where a lot of that comes through. Um, I think it was good conversation with the applicant. Um, but ultimately, um, you know, this is, um, this is not a fundamental change in their business. Um, it's kind of adding, adding another level. Um, so I think monitoring from the police department perspective, right? This, this license comes up for renewal every year. This pouring license comes up for renewal every year. So, um, monitoring it from the police perspective, um, this April through October makes a lot of sense to me.
Thank you. And then I know this is a public hearing and our previous, uh, the, the first evening of the public hearing, we had a lot of public comment, um, and I'm still open to public comments. But I would ask that people, uh, make a new point, so not reiterating points of the previous evening, but if there are points in response to the changes that were made, um, any other feedback about comments? I think, uh, and also we, um, we ask, I ask that people limit their comments to three minutes. Um, and perhaps others can help me with, with the timing. Um, but we do want to hear from the public, especially in response to the changes to the application that have been made. Um, so in that, I would ask that if you come forward, please, uh, if you do want to speak, please come forward and identify yourself. Um, and if you're a vending resident, make sure you also say your name and address. Um, any other comments from the board before we open it up to public comment? Okay. So, uh, so please, if you do have, uh, comments, please join us at, um, at the table and announce yourself. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Henry Lane, appearing on behalf of, uh, Jerios who have just got on the street at 13 level. And I was here a month ago, I think, and I had some questions. And, and I got some answers today. I'm glad to see that some was done, I still have a few questions. And part of it's probably based on my ignorance, because I've never actually, you know, seen the operation. So as I understand it, currently there's a lineary license and there is seating outside largely. And there's no inside seating currently, is that, is that correct?
There, I believe there is no current seating. There had been previously, uh, before they configured the, the, Lisa, do you want to add a lot? No, we serve outside at picnic tables.
Okay, so now we're adding, I guess what's called the loft, the garage building. And so are we going to have multiple serving points or are we going to have either or? You know, is there going to be like the bar outside, a bar inside, two bars or one bar? I, I'm just not sure how this is operating.
Yeah, so I, the plan is to continue like with outdoor picnic tables. Um, it would be a nice space to use in case of, uh, rain. Um, but we're not planning on having like two different serving locations open at the same time.
But there are going to be two serving locations.
Um, I mean, it hasn't been set up yet, so I, I don't know. I.
And I, I've worked on more than a few legal licenses. Typically, you know, the serving locations are identified so that we know what we're permitting. We're permitting indoor service, outdoor service, both, and in care where this is going to be. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm just confused. If we're going to have outdoor and indoor at the same time, we're obviously going to increase the volume of patrons potentially. We add music, you know, I, I'm just confused. I mean, typically when you, this board and any town board issues a license for a premises to pour, you know where the bar is going to be. It's not, it doesn't float. And I, I think in order for this board to make it, you know, a rational decision, they have to know, okay, we have a service point here, we have a service, service point there, just so you can monitor the activity. It, it just makes no sense to say, we're going to give you a license and you can serve beer, you can serve wine, serve any way you'd like, indoors, outdoors, it's up to you. That's not the way we do licensing for alcoholic beverage, uh, premises generally. I'm not sure if that's what's done in this town, but that's typically not what's done in, in this state. So, you know.
Thank, thank you for that, for that, uh, question.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. So is the issue location or whether it's simultaneous? Because I think, okay, so I think the locations are, there's, there's one in the loft based on a drawing I saw. And then there's the existing. So is the question then for you to say, will they be operating simultaneously?
That's the question.
Okay, so it's been the first, first time that we talked about this, the intent is not to do it, but that's not, we're not ruling out the possibility you might be running both taps at the same time. That's my understanding.
I mean, it could happen in the future, it's not in the plan.
But that, but there is the potential for simultaneous. So when you say, we're not asking the right questions, this is my working assumption. So while you're confused, that's my understanding and if I'm wrong, tell me. But is, so does that help clarify?
Well, it clarifies in the sense that we don't know the answer.
Well, no, actually, I was very, I was very specific. I said there are two locations, both are potentially operating at the same time, although the intent is not to do it unless it's raining. But in my mind, I see a situation, which is why I was asking the occupancy question, that both could be running at the same time. Okay. If those ones are current, yeah.
So there are both. So Jeremy, do you have any, uh, input about whether this could be clarified additionally in the application?
Um, yeah, I'll have to check our other pouring permits. Um, I was, I was. I was not under the impression that the local licensing authority prescribed the points of service at individual establishments under a pouring license. You know, whether a restaurant has an upstairs bar and a downstairs bar, I don't think their pouring permit ends up being any different from the local licensing authority. The descriptions of premise maybe, but I don't think this board, I will check with council tomorrow, but I don't think. Prescribing the points of service is under the purview of the local licensing authority.
But I just want to be clear that my understanding is, this, this is what I gleaned from our discussions. There's two, two points, they potentially running at the same time, although the intent is not to run them at the same time. And if I, Jeremy, if we need to know more than that, tell me, but I, that's my understanding.
Just a minute, another.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was a little, a little difficult to hear what was going on, but did we ever get a number of the, of the possible occupancy for the, for the loft area?
We are waiting to hear from the, from building inspector.
We anticipate that it would be between fifty and seventy-five people. I obviously can't say that because I am not the building inspector, but if I had to guess, that would be my guess. Just to give you like a.
Yes.
Sure.
Which is. Close to what you have currently outside. And I counted about ninety spaces outside, but. Again, it's based on aerial photography, so I.
Sure, like I said, we have seventy-five picnic tables, and sometimes people bring a picnic blanket, sometimes they bring their own chairs. We have a lot of space for them to, to set up and hang out, so.
With respect to, I can, we talked about this, I don't want to belabor the, the point, but. Men's bylaws pretty particular about what's required for parking, to find the, the space, the aisle width. And again, typically what we see with these kinds of applications is that we see a sketch of a parking lot showing this parking space, it's delineating that, showing where. Goes, so that we have some control and what we could sort of. Identify whether or not this compliance is allowed. And again, I don't see, I don't see a layout of the parking lot to demonstrate that. In fact. We have adequate parking under the, as required by the, by the bylaw. It tells you how many spaces you need for every person that's there. I don't know how you can make a judgment without having an actual layout of, of the parking area. Again, I, I have to buy this place, I see that the. Space, I don't see any marked parking spaces. I don't see any marked lanes that show where the fire line is.
It's not a free parking lot. I will say we take our parking very seriously and we have a few lovely parking attendants. They help people into their spots, make sure the aisles are clear, et cetera.
If I, if I can, if I can add as well, that parking is a zoning question, and this is a licensing one, and those discussions, while. Both relevant to the business operations of the applicant, the parking discussion is not, you know, within the purview. Of the licensing approval from the select board. That, that should be taken up on a zoning level.
Thank, thank you for that, Jeremy.
Further, as I said, those parking issues of being under discussion is litigation that's on outside the purview, it can't be discussed. So we can't answer. It relates to parking in general of both sides, if your understanding is not correct.
So I understand that a significant portion of the litigation relates to the use of the parking lot across the street.
But, yeah, but we, I asked that we not discuss this, the litigation at this point. I think it's mentioned. It's ongoing, but I think it's best that we not discuss it further. I know if you. I think.
I, I brought it up.
Right.
And I would say this, I understand. Might see a increase.
He already comes, but yeah.
The issue you bring up, one is only two existing, so if, if, you know. Our decision on this particular topic. Really doesn't impact that, do we need to explore that? Maybe, but right now, there, it's a farm, so I'm assuming you can support sixty cars somewhere on the premises.
Yeah.
So given the numbers we're talking about and the zoning for parking, you know, one space for every five people, et cetera, which is in the bylaw. It feels like it does it today. Our understanding is we're going to increase our, the, the occupancy. And so there's really no impact to current state. That's why I said status quo. Now, is it worth exploring as part of a separate discussion, as part of the litigation, make sure everything's covered? That's fine, but in terms of this discussion right now. If it's status quo and it's working. That's fine. If somebody wants to raise their hand, say, we have a zoning issue, that can be brought to another floor.
Let, let me just, I don't want to belabor the point, but I, I was very pleased to hear what the, what the police chief had to say, and I would strongly encourage that if you issue a license. That you do make a condition on the, the understanding that there will be no on-street parking, because that's obviously primary consideration. He lives there, he's had people park on his lawn, frankly, and. You know, that, that's existing, that's without the new license. So if you could, you know, do him a favor and at least put a condition in that there's not going to be any on-street parking, so.
Jeremy, is that something that we can, if, address with these licenses, whether there's any sort of. Restriction on, on-street parking, or is that something that is outside of the licensing?
Yeah, this license has nothing to do with the regulation of the public way. We can do both concurrently, but this license is not related to that. I will say, for, for those of us who've traveled on Level Street, like, you, you can't park on the street, right? You would, you would block, you know, half the road. So if, if there is, if there is somebody who's, who is parking on the street, call the police department, they'll be ticketed and towed likely. Chief Son, I don't want to speak for them, but we can explore no parking signs on the street, of course, but that is, that is distinct from.
What's that, Chief Kersey? I think maybe that was, yeah, so I think, I think that is a question that we can pursue outside of this hearing, uh, addressing the.
Yeah, I think there's a number of tangential signage, speed limit, and we kind of ask Chief Kersey to.
These aren't good issues to play to with public. I would love to just say that we have seen the Jerio parking on the street and. I mean, we can submit evidence to, to prove it, but that's not why we're here.
I think, right, the question. Is, I guess, after, at some point after this hearing, outside of this hearing, we, we. Can take it up with public safety to make sure that they're like, and, and with highway to, to address concerns about this.
When, when the meeting closed, perhaps we can actually identify specific action items that we could put in the minutes.
We can, we can write, put them in a future agenda, and then is there additional boards and committees that we need to bring in that we can do that?
I was thinking delegate.
Yeah, we could just ask that.
We can, that's true.
Sorry, Jeremy.
Yeah.
I was thinking.
I could not hear what the town, the town manager said about the zoning issue. I know it's something of agri business.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Jeremy, are you able to repeat a little bit of the zoning issues? I think that, that the audio is, has improved since you first spoke?
Yeah, certainly. So let me pull up my memo here. So. The zoning table of uses allows within rural residential exempt commercial agriculture, and then it goes on to discuss what agriculture is. What farms are, and then our mended right-to-farm bylaw defines farming as encompassing activities. Related to a number of things, but including agritourism, provided the activities are related to the marketing and agricultural outputs or services of the farm. So our zoning enforcement officer has not made a determination because it's not been a, a issue presented in front of him. But town council has opined that the mending zoning bylaw defines farming as including agritourism. The Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, help me out, the M D A R, I think it is. Also defines farming as including agriculture resources, as including agritourism. So those definitions of farming then set within the zoning table of uses allow agritourism within the rural residential. And, you know, adding brewery operations with a farmer brewery permit with beer produced by or for them. In the opinion of council and frankly, in my opinion, fit squarely within agritourism and then are allowable use under the zoning table of uses. Again, that's a zoning question, not a licensing one.
And I would suggest it's a bridge too far. You try and conflate several concepts there, but none of those things. Expressly allow malt beverage pouring licenses in a, in a residential zone, so. I'll, I'll have to disagree, and I suppose we'll have that fight on another day, but without zoning that expressly allows this kind of business. Entertainment.
I, I.
Distribution, this license ought to be denied. Both licenses are denied.
Thank you for your, Jeremy, did you have any other comments?
Yeah, I would just remind the board that we have a chapter sixty-one. Farm and agriculture center in Southwick Zoo that's in a rural residential setting. That also has a all malt beverages pouring license, or all beverages pouring license, and an entertainment license in rural residential.
And that has been the case for a number, I know, I know before. Open Galliford's opened. I don't, maybe ten years ago. Thank you for that, Jeremy. Just to take it back to the parking, I think that our attorney wants to say something about it. Oh, okay, I will allow that. That's a comment, yes. Thank you for your time, sir. I don't know if you can, right, can you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, you, you're correct. The parking issue is totally in the hands of the court right now and is not subject to the license. It's a zoning issue, it was brought as a zoning issue, and we would appreciate the board keeping it a zoning issue.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Okay. All right, so are there any other members of the public in the room? First of all, who would like to add a, a new comment, so not reiterating a comment that you made at a previous. Evening of the hearing, but, but you are welcome to, yes, please, please, if you could come up and say. Oh, well, it is part of the formal process of the public hearing, so if you could, please say your name and your address if you're a Menden resident. Thank you.
Laura in your room, and I live on Seventh Level Street.
Thank you.
So, you go down. First of all, walking Level Street, I always have walked my dog there. It's a ridiculous street. It should be two ways, but it's not. It should be twenty-five, but around the corner should actually be ten, right on the corner, but it's not, so that's a non-true. And people parking in your yard on Level Street because of this is ridiculous. I don't know who would do that. But in terms of, you know, we're talking about Friday night and adding beer. To a winery, so what? You know, it's not this big deal. And even if it increased, they have tons of space, obviously. The other thing is. The music on Friday night, if you could amplify. Those are not the gunshots I'm always listening to from the other side, but seriously. I mean, you're talking Friday nights, you're talking an extra hour on a Saturday? I mean, this, this.
Sunday.
A Sunday, I'm sorry. This is also ridiculous for, for this issue. It, it doesn't even make sense. I've been there twenty years, so, you know. The neighborhood is what it is. It's a typical street. Well, actually, the beer box are really nice. You walk to their house first for money to theirs. They'll let me walk in the back there, so I don't have to, because you really do almost get it. Walking a drive, anybody that walks the drive down the street or their kids, my neighbors do, they don't have that. But honestly, with the big, I mean, I say, I say go for it, I sort of. These are industrious people that are huge hard workers, and they've got a great thing going, and my friends are like, oh, they live down the street from the winery, and I haven't even gone there. Just because I'm doing other things, but I don't see the issue. I mean, I say go for it. Why do they hide these people? I don't know.
Thank, thank, thank you for your.
I'm just, see.
Great, thank you. Is there, are, are there any other members of the public in the room that would like to speak to this issue? And specifically to remind people about the addition of the malt beverage pouring, the entertainment license and the change of hours. Three issues on the table for this hearing explicitly. Yes, if you could please come up and again, say your name and address.
Steven Moore, Fifth and Gas Street. I work at the winery. And I love my job. Didn't know if I should say that. I don't feel as though adding the malt beverage is going to change anything. To be a part of. I think what's happening is if a family comes or a couple comes, like I said last time in the meeting, that he's definitely going to go. Well, here it goes, but now he's able to purchase beer. Rather than think about, oh, July, maybe I'll be okay with this in for you, or, you know, let's try something else that at least that has provided. I don't think it's going to add more people. I think it gives more of an option. And as for the entertainment. It's a big space. And I don't think that the neighbors are going to interfere. It's going to be so loud that it's not going to interfere with their living. Or sleeping, or, you know, go out and have a campfire and enjoy it, but no, seriously, I don't think it's going to change anything. I don't think it's going to change the traffic flow, because again, I think people are going, it's a destination. People love going. We have engagements there, we've had birthday parties, we've had anniversary parties, people to show up. Because they know it's a very low-key type of atmosphere. And I think it's going to stay that way, even though we're having. An FDA. Or else you're. Just.
Great, thank, thank you for your input. I guess one, one follow-up question I have for you, Lisa, is. So there's, as far as the entertainment, so there's, you know, you expect it to be not very loud. But I, I think I would encourage the public that if there is a question about a specific noise level, I think, how would you address that? Like, in the event that there is a live music event, sure, so. Would you be open to the public input if?
I mean, we're happy, we've always been, I feel like we've always been respectful of our neighbors. I've been telling people for years. That I didn't want to do live music because we're in a residential area, but so many people ask for it. You have so many customers that come back time and again and ask for it. I think it would be really lovely to offer it. I mean, I'm, I feel like we've always been respectful in terms of. We've done at the farm, so I don't think that live music would change that. We do acknowledge, and, you know, it says in the. The mended right-to-farm bylaw. You know, activity.
You know, that other people might be impacted by agricultural operations in the town. Is one of the things that it says in the bylaw. So, yeah, we acknowledge what we do impacts our neighbors to some degree. We try and minimize that, is what I would say.
Thank you.
And then just, just to point out that. Menden does not have a noise limits.
We do not.
And it's been proposed, I've talked to the chief, I'd like to. Create one and put it on the.
Annual town meeting warrant. Actually pass it.
I think, right, I think there has been some question with the, the bylaw review committee, so that. That may be addressed, that may be addressed at a town level as.
I mean, less leaf blowers, am I right?
It could come up, yes, the right-to-farm bylaw, because exactly the one she points, that there are certain objections.
Yeah.
Sounds and smell and activities that occur on farms, and I think that points out the fact.
And I think that points out the fact, order to allow that because they want this type of activity in the town, but it certainly is reasonable respect, reasonable level of noise without too much, which is why I think we need an ordinance to give the tools they need to enforce it. It becomes harsh objections.
Good point. Thank you. I think Frank is trying to say something again.
Ah, okay.
Frank, are you trying to talk again?
No, I'm all good.
Okay. I guess I think it might have been someone else who wasn't muted. All right. All right. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to add a comment? And I would like to open it up to the online participants if anyone would like to add a comment or ask a question. So I don't, I don't see any more input. So then, I guess, are the, before we close the public hearing, I guess I would like to put it to the board, do we, do you each feel like we have enough information to vote on this tonight, or would any of you advocate for waiting for additional answers?
I'm good. I don't need any more information. I'm good. I have enough information.
Okay. All right. So then, in that case, I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I had one more thing to say.
Yes.
And not to bring up zoning, but so, in my opinion, the town council opinion answered zoning to my satisfaction, but I just wanted to point out that there are mechanisms that the town deal with zoning issues in town meetings. Sorry. All right. I'll, I'll speak a little louder. So I just wanted to point out that the town council opinion has answered zoning to my satisfaction, but I also would be remiss not to point out that there are mechanisms in our bylaws to allow citizens and other people to make adjustments to zoning guidelines. I just wanted to point out.
We'll point out, the motion on the table is about closing the public hearing, so we will have a mission call opportunity to discuss. So the motion on the table is about closing the public hearing, so any further discussion on that? Okay. So all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? I believe we have one abstention who is not able to get started this hearing. So then, then I would be open to a motion to, in respect to the application, the approval for, you know, the patient.
I move to approve the application for a public hearing for a department to serve malt beverages and entertainment license and change of hours for Menden Farm Winery, continuing on meeting and requirements.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Abstained.
So that's four in favor and one abstention. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much to the public for your input for helping us to turn this into the application. And we will, so, thank you very much for your time. Forward to seeing the new changes, I guess, coming in spring.
Thank you.
See you later. All right. So then, I'm on to the other end.
In these, we have the question.
Okay. So a little bit of.
All right. Thank you.
I want to say.
Yes. Go ahead. Absolutely.
I'm administrator.
Yeah. Absolutely. Speed limit, standard. All right.
Your mics are all acting weird again, guys. The mics are all acting weird, it's like cutting out and skipping.
Okay. All right. We'll wait a moment. I don't know if it might have been the noise from the stairs. Is that better?
Can you hear us now, Dave?
Yep, that's better now.
Everybody walking downstairs.
Okay. So the motion on the table, for those who didn't hear it, was to ask our town administrator to work with public safety to address, actually, could you repeat it? The item assigned, it was.
Right. To, to address signs, speed limit, et cetera, as well as any other concerns that were mentioned in the meeting related to this program.
So that was, that was a motion?
Kind of a general statement.
Right. And second by Mike G., and then, all right, discussion. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay. So one abstention from Jason. Okay. Great. And then, so next, item three on the agenda is to continue, to continue the public, six forty public hearing for Verizon in New England. And Jeremy, could you speak again to this? I believe that we are going to have to continue this again.
Yes. Excuse it. So you don't have to vote to open it. You can just announce it's being continued until a future date. We don't have the license back from Verizon. Our attorney sent it to Verizon. They've redlined it a few times. So once we get it back, then we'll get it on the calendar, but this will be continued to a future date, if the chair so announces.
Okay. I so announce. So, all right. So then, right, number four, citizen statements and petitions. Feel so late to have this one. So anyone in the room or online for a topic that is not on the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement, and I'll promise I'll keep it in three minutes. But I just, I want to announce that Menden has a new Eagle Scout.
Awesome. Yes.
Colby Duncan is Troop One Menden's one hundred and fifth Eagle Scout.
Wow.
And, you know, while we're talking about it, you know, he started out as a member of Troop Forty-four, and then, because it was a better fit at some point, came over to Troop One and completed there. But also point out, you know, Troop Forty-four is actually chartered by the Menden firefighters, Forty-four from, from the fire station, you know, number, number forty-four is, is, you know, the Menden, the Menden Fire Department's call number. And it's interesting, a lifelong resident, Mark Schmidt, who just recently became an EMT, you know, and, and works on the Menden Fire Department, is, was a Troop One member, and then he moved over to Troop Forty-four when it started and became Troop, Troop Forty-four's first Eagle Scout. His brother, Lucas, is also a Troop Forty-four Eagle Scout. The fire chief in Menden, Jason Bagma, is an Eagle Scout from Oxbridge. Former select board chair and current elected assessor, Ken O'Brien, was a scout master, and he is, and he is an Eagle Scout. Jason Cooder is an Eagle Scout. I'm an Eagle Scout from Troop One Menden. And I say all of this because in, in twenty twenty-six, next year, Troop One Menden will have its one hundredth anniversary, and it's been continually chartered as a Boy Scout, four hundred years. And after World War One, it was started by a group of citizens, but after World War One, the Roger Relwood Post, American Legion, was started, and one of the things that those men and women did was they took over the charter and have sponsored Troop One Menden for all those years since then. So right now, there was a planning committee. We are in the process of coming up with a location. We're hoping to approach the town to actually potentially have a camperee on the, what was formerly the Bonda property, I'm sorry, not Bonda, Paddock property. And it would be appropriate, because Mr. Paddock was the fishing merit badge counselor when he was alive. But, but little piece of Menden history and memorabilia, and I want to just say congratulations to Colby Duncan. His Eagle Scout project was to build an outdoor classroom at Misco. It looks spectacular.
I saw a photo. Yeah. Congratulations, Colby.
So anyone, anyone who's listening or sees the recording, anyone who's ever a scout moved into, you know, moved into Menden, was certainly Troop One alumni, Troop Forty-four alumni, you know, were all part of the brother and sisterhood of scouting, and I hope everybody helps us and makes this one hundredth anniversary a success. But I just wanted to point it out. I hope that was one of the three. It's only six minutes.
All right. Any additional?
I don't.
Any additional? So, so thank you for that. Any additional statements and petitions online? Single screen now of online attendees. Okay. All right. So then, let's move on to item five appointments. We have one appointment for a new assistant town clerk and assistant treasurer collector. And I don't know if he was.
Pretty much.
I'm like, looking for you online.
Figured it had to be you, because who else is hanging out except for Phil?
Phil's always sitting there.
Phil, we'll get you an A class for that, sure.
I'll let James introduce himself in a moment.
James Barret. Okay. So Jeremy, were you saying something?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to contextualize this a little bit before James got to introduce himself and the board got to, got to, you know, interview and appoint, talk and appoint. So we were interviewing for a few different positions, and we had, we had James come in and interview with the treasurer collector, with the town clerk and our HR, and both departments were super impressed with, with him, that we kind of crafted a position that combined two needs that we had. The assistant town clerk, which I only had this big buildup, because the assistant town clerk is actually procedurally appointed by the town clerk. It is a statutory position, and you need to be appointed by the town clerk to be the assistant town clerk. The assistant treasurer collector is, of course, appointed by the select board, but as this position's going to function, it'll be a recognized position in the Town Hall Union, and the position title will be assistant town clerk, assistant treasurer collector, split, you know, seventy-five percent with treasurer collector and twenty-five percent with the town clerk, but with the understanding of floating back and forth as the, as the office needs, you know, vary from week to week, but that's the general approach. We haven't had this position title brought to the board before in this combination, so I just wanted to contextualize it a little bit.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right.
So are we appointing him because, because the assistant town clerk is appointed by the town clerk? Are we appointing him only as the assistant treasurer collector, or can we make the motion to appoint him as both?
I spoke with the assistant town clerk, oh, sorry, I spoke with the town clerk about this, and she said she was comfortable with the motion being appointing to both positions from the select board, because that will be the title within the org chart, how the person functions within the organization, but then the town clerk will make her own appointment on kind of fulfilling the statutory role to appoint him to assistant town clerk. But the position, as it's going to be recognized within the Town Hall Union, will include both of these titles, so I think the motion should include both of the titles.
Okay. Great. Thank, thank you for that context, Jeremy. And James, thank you for, for joining us this evening. So I, yeah, could you, yeah, introduce yourself and say a little bit about why you've applied?
Yeah. My name is James Barretford, and I applied and definitely interested in civic engagement. As a college student, I did some reporting on the student government, so sitting in, it's actually very interesting watching how it works to see business aspect of the town. So, yeah, basically, I do look for the civic engagement aspect of it.
Thank you. Any, any questions from the board?
I will say, James is also a Menden resident.
Yeah. That, that, like, switch between the two offices, they're, they're on top of each other, too, so I'm, I'm interested to see how that goes.
Get steps in, going back and forth.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think so. I mean, I, I mean, in a different context, I worked at a hotel, and basically, one day they're like, hey, we have a system of property. It's totally different, but, you know, in the sense that, you know, being in a situation where they say, hey, we need you in this other somewhat different, but totally different at the same time operation. I have been in the situation where, you know, they're just like, this is what we're going to do. They put me in it. So consciously being aware of that, totally, I feel like I'm up to the, to the task.
Great.
And it's my understanding that you were interviewed by our treasurer collector, by our HR director, and our town clerk?
Yes.
So, okay. Were they a panel?
Well, it's a table.
Okay. All right. Great.
It's just a statement more, I just want to thank Jeremy and the team for, you know, thinking outside of the box, because this gets back to our succession planning, our shared resources discussion. A count of our size, can't step every position to do it very siloed, so this is a great step to start to be creative with how we kind of build our operations.
Here.
Yeah. Thanks for that, Mike. I think it is, too. I, I came in after an appointment one morning. Jennifer pulled me into the conference room and they said, our HR director, and they said, we solved two of your problems. So I did very well. This was, this was the treasurer collector, the clerk, and HR figuring this out. So I will pass along your, your kudos to them.
Great. Yeah, I love hearing about that cooperation as well. So fantastic. So any other questions for our candidates? Thanks, and I would be looking for a motion.
I move to appoint James Barretford to the assistant town clerk slash assistant treasurer collector at the rate of twenty-eight dollars forty-two cents per hour with a start date of February, period, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion?
Sitting here for an hour and a half, but proving up to the job, so.
Further discussion?
Just making sure that all the background checks are completed.
Yes, good point. I understand that they have been completed. Jeremy, can you back me up on that?
Yes, the background check has been completed and passed.
Excellent.
All right. Any other points? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you for your.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations. Be around Town Hall.
All right. So next up, we have items six, budget updates. So Jeremy, I believe this is you.
Yes. So, thanks, everyone. I sent out my budget memo on January second to all our department heads and everyone who, who is responsible for a budget. Kind of went through where we're at revenue-wise, what my expectations were for the budget process. Folks are, folks have been instructed to submit a level service budget and then provide some notation, you know, contracted services, you know, went up five percent, but, you know, but, you know, we're still providing the same level of service, it should cost five percent more. And then if they want to add anything that is beyond level service, I kind of created a form with some rationale and to get their thoughts down on paper. So when we sit down to talk, and then before they sit down with you to talk, they have kind of really hashed out what it is the ask is, how much it costs, what the ongoing costs at this one time, all of that. So our schedule is that January twenty-second, budgets requests are due back to me, and then the first two weeks of February, budget, you know, budget managers will, will meet, department heads will meet with me to discuss their budget. And then March, at varying dates, we'll bring the department heads in and meet with the select board and FinCom to discuss those requests. So I imagine this board would like to have joint meetings with FinCom in, in this board. And then, it's kind of like two approaches. Either you put all the big departments in one night and have one big meeting, or you split the big departments up one each night and then have it filled in with the other departments. So both kind of work, so whatever this board is, is kind of more comfortable with. But that's the general schedule right now. I copied you on my memo to department heads, but just to, just to reiterate, you know, my current revenue projection, we've got about a three and a half percent increase over fiscal twenty-five levels. And as we get further in and we refine and we get the governor's numbers and all that, I'll go walk through my local receipts projection. But just to remind the board, eighty-eight and a half percent of our revenues are derived from local property taxes, which are capped by Proposition Two and a Half. So really, there's not a lot of wiggle room in terms of what we can do with our revenues. We pretty much know what they're going to be each year, eighty-eight and a half percent of them at least. So, yeah, I just wanted to update the board on that. We're going to have a more built-out personnel piece of the budget as we go through and kind of, I don't want to say six, but how we more standardize, how we do grades and steps, we'll be able to kind of print that in a more precise personnel budget. So that won't be printed this year. It'll just be data collecting, and then the FY twenty-seven budget will have a much more. Um, we, we pretty much know what they're going to be each year, um, eighty-eight and a half percent of them at least. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to update the board on that. Um, we're going to have a, uh, more built out personnel piece of the budget, um, as we go through and kind of, I don't want to say six, but how we, uh, more standardized, how we do grades and steps, um, we'll be able to kind of print that in a more precise personnel budget. So that won't be printed this year. It'll just be data collecting. And then the FY twenty-seven budget will have a much more robust personnel piece to it. That's, that's printed and available for folks to look at. Um, that's, that's, that's all I have on budget right now.
Great, thank you. All right, so then let's move on to, uh, seven, amended Hope Dale Mass DOT project six oh eight four nine one two G. Jeremy?
Yeah, if, um, if the board remembers, we had the gentleman from Mass DOT come in and talk about right of way and easements and all of that for a number of pieces of property for this Route sixteen project. Um, so there's one more parcel, um, that previously was all postal storage and is now owned by the town of Mendenham. Um, so it was identified later in, in their, um, in their, um, due diligence. Um, there's a thousand square feet, give or take, um, that they need to come in, um, have a right to entry and then will grade seed and loam, um, and return back to its previous state, um, once, um, once they're finished with it. So this, the, the board was, I think, got a really great presentation, asked a lot of really great questions. The last time we had a number of parcels this applied to, uh, but now this just applies to one more parcel.
Can, can I ask Jeremy that there was one action item that talked about, uh, potentially or, or the requirement of relocating the Civil War monument at, uh, at the apex of Maple Street at Route sixteen? And if I'm not mistaken, the state said that they would pay to relocate that for as far as files.
Yep, so they, they will relocate it within a fifty mile radius with, anywhere within town. Um, so the historic commission or historic district commission, I forget which, or maybe it was both, uh, reached out to me just earlier this week and said, what's the status of that? Um, so I, I put a note into our DOT project manager and said, can we, can we have a meeting on that? What's, what's the plan? How do we, how do we go forward? What are the kind of steps we have to take to, to positively say we want it, you know, here versus there? Um, so, yeah, I just sent a note on that because, um, uh, you're right, that was an action item from the last thing and I, I hadn't followed up on it yet.
And just, just to throw it out there, you know, we have, we have obviously the Swan Dale Cemetery. We have the Quaker Cemetery, George Street, you know, and we may even have another cemetery, uh, that could be, and of course, the idea of relocating a monument someplace if we can get the state to actually pay to pave roadway replaced, want to be created without our request.
Interesting suggestion, yeah.
Very interesting suggestion, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, Jeremy, if that's a question that can come up in the, um, in the process.
Um, yeah, sure, Mike, if you can, I, I heard most of that, but if you can just send me a note, send me an email about, um, about that. Um, so I have the specifics of your asks and then when we have, um, we have the meeting with DOT, I'll make sure that gets brought up.
Great, thank you.
Do, do we need to determine where it moves? Is that a future agenda topic?
I think it relates to what, uh, Jeremy's.
Well, I think he, he's, right, he's following up saying, how do we go about doing this? They're gonna say, well, where do you want it?
Right, but that's.
Exactly. So we need to prepare to say.
Mike's proposing a.
We should probably have, I don't know, who or what or us, but an agenda topic to say, will we move somewhere? Yeah, it's a big question mark.
But my, my guess is based on, what, what is the timeframe for this project, um, to begin? For it to be finished?
It's still tied to next year.
Is it still next year? The two years?
Yeah, yeah, I believe, I believe it's a twenty twenty-six, um, fall twenty twenty-six start and then mostly twenty twenty-seven construction, but I can, I, I had that on recall at some point, but I, I don't, I don't remember at the moment.
And when we do that, we can invite the appropriate state, just to make sure everyone's consulted.
That's great, awesome, thank you.
And then, so I see there, there is a.
Lonnie has.
Oh, Lonnie, yes, you have a question?
Yeah, just keep in mind that just that's part of the parade route from Memorial Day. So, uh, just in the, when picking a location, I don't know if we'd want to deviate too far off of the parade route.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, I think, yeah, I think there will need to be future discussions about this and maybe bringing in the historic commission as well. I don't know, Jeremy, does it seem like we could schedule something? Do we have enough information to schedule something yet?
Um, not yet, but I can do that pretty quickly. Um, let me talk to DOT and see what makes sense for them and then we can schedule something jointly for this.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for that, uh, input, Lonnie. All right, so there is a, um, a motion on the agenda and I want to make sure people.
I would, uh, make a motion.
Sorry. It's a, it's a big packet. I was getting to the right page.
I connection to a clue.
So is it, so is this? This specific project, I know this is part of a bigger project, so I guess my question is, this is. Or is this project number refers to the specific, um, property and not the whole big project?
Is this, yeah, is this only, is this only the piece of the project that, uh, that changed to that? Was a thousand square feet of, of town property?
Yeah, the motion should be for parcel two dash TE dash seven four.
Yeah, it calls out the parcel number on the form.
Okay. And the, um, I'm just, the, as far as what the motion needs to be, um, I'm sorry, I'm just looking, I'm just matching up sort of what's in, what's in the, um, what's in the packet and then the project. So the six oh eight four nine one is what's on the right of entry document and I'm not sure.
Six oh eight four nine one, six oh eight four nine one refers to the entire project. So the motion should be to approve the right of entry, um, at parcel two dash TE dash seven four for project six oh eight four nine one.
That's sure.
Okay, thank you.
I could sit right here.
Okay.
All right, uh, so I move to approve the Mendenham Hope Dale Mass, uh, right of entry for project number six oh eight four nine one two G for parcel numbers two dash TE dash seven four.
Second.
Discussion. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's great, thank you. All right, so next up, we have, uh, some meeting minutes for circulation. So a number of minutes, uh, both recent and the older ones, so we will be, uh, voting on those at the next, uh, at the next meeting. So please, if you have any, um, suggested edits, please do send those to Katie, so that we can edit those in our, in our.
Sounds good.
I think, yeah, I think that was in, yeah, that was, I think that was, uh, crap, Mike, yeah. Always posted as this. So, uh, so number nine is the old Salt Box Road, old Salt Box Road update. And Jeremy, I believe this is you again?
Yeah, this will be very brief. Um, so there was, um, some issues with, uh, who was on the signatory page. Um, there was a deceased member, um, signing the, the, the document. Um, so town council is working with Ann Mazar, um, who's facilitating the donation. Um, there is a very procedural way, people who can act on behalf of the state, all the trust documents are there to do it, uh, but it is far from straightforward. Um, so town council is working with, with Ann. Um, and, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll have a document, um, bu- by the next, um, regular board meeting on the fifth, um, that the board can sign. Um, as a reminder, this board has signed, this board has voted, um, to accept the donation. Um, uh, it was donated as conservation land and the conservation commission has voted to accept. Um, and then, so now we're just waiting our signatures and we don't need any, any further vote. Uh, but we're, we're, you know, we're near the goal line on it.
Is this a, a, a recent, somebody that recently passed?
No.
As, as in since the last time that we, we discussed this and made that?
Um, no, this is something, um, this is still the same kind of intractable, not intractable, the same, the same ongoing issue. Um, and just folks' schedule over the holidays didn't, um, you know, they didn't connect, so they've recently connected on this. Um, and hopefully we'll, we'll have something soon. So no, this is someone who passed away, I think decades ago, um, but was on the deed. Um, so we have to go through the, the trust and will documents, um, to be able to unwind it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeremy. All right, so then, uh, item ten, I believe, so select board policies and procedures. So last I knew, it was still with town council for review. Is that where we are?
Yeah. Yep, so, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's with councils. Um, we haven't, I haven't received it back from council. Um, there's been a, a number of issues, uh, uh, not, not problems, a number, a number of tasks, um, with, with council. Um, and this one just has not, um, you know, been completed yet. Um, so that's still with council.
Mentioned it next round.
Presser on it, but, um, yeah.
And then, uh, let's see, so eleven is the financial policy review, Jeremy?
This is a, this is a similar comment. Um, so we've had, we had two financial policy documents. Uh, one was more procedure based, one was policy based. Um, so the procedure based one was written by our town accountant. Um, there were a number of things in there, um, that I wanted to make edits on, um, and that I needed further input on. So I, I made edits and sent it back to our town accountant. But before I presented to this board, um, a document that says, you know, authored by Eric and Sheriff's Town Accountant, uh, but then with my, you know, annotations to it, um, I wanted to send it back to the town accountant first. Um, so that's with the town accountant. Um, then there's another list of, um, policies, um, that are more, like I said, policy based rather than the procedures that the accountant wrote. Um, and my initial plan and what I, what I had done for most of it was to kind of redline it and give you a redlined copy. But it got, it got just way, way too messy and it became too big of a project to be able for you to actually understand kind of what was the original, what was changed. Um, so I'm rewriting it in a way that makes, to me, makes more sense in terms of thematics. Um, and that's just has taken me a lot longer, um, than I anticipated. So, um, the procedures one, um, should be back to you for the, by the next meeting where the accountant reviews it. Um, and then my policy one, again, is just, I, I, I bit off a lot with it, um, but it's, it's ongoing. But it's, uh, it's become a bigger project than initially anticipated.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Uh, Jeremy, are those two documents, how do they relate to each other? Are they going to be standalone approved at the same time? Or are they going to eventually be combined into one document?
I think they should continue to be two separate documents. Um, the procedures document, um, has, you know, says who signs, uh, uh, who signs a voucher and who it goes to and how many days you need and what's a credit card authorization look like and all that kind of stuff. And the policy says, you know, debt should be between, you know, three and five percent of the general fund. And, and, um, here's how, here's the prioritization on stabilization and things like that. So, um, I've, I've, um, kind of done the, um, some of the stuff, there is some financial stuff in the select board policy and procedures that I want to make sure these ran concurrent, um, and didn't conflict each other. Um, so I've, I've done that, but I, I, I think they should be standalone documents. Um, I guess it would be a question of whether the select board wants to approve a procedures document or if you just want to approve the policies document.
Yeah, let's see, just the policy.
Mike, gee, you also started to say something.
Yeah, as I say, Jer- uh, Jeremy, when you, uh, submit the, your, your draft of the financial policy, can you just provide the source, the original source document alongside? So if there's ever a question of, we can go back and forth between the two. You don't have to redline it, just give us both.
Yeah, certainly. Um, so that's, that's an ongoing project. Um, you know, it, it takes sitting down and concentrating for a few hours at a clip and that, um, I don't often have uninterrupted few hours at a clip, so it's just, it's just taking a little bit longer than anticipated.
Understandable. All right, thank you. Uh, okay, so item twelve is goal discussion. Um, I know I have a few thoughts on this. Uh, I think, did I hear, Mike Goddard, you have some questions about this? So this is related to, we have our, uh, our goal discussion meeting is our next scheduled meeting, which is for January twenty-ninth. Um, I know my own goals for this meeting was at least to review some of the goals that we've set in, in past meetings, um, and, uh, you know, see, see where we are on those. And we are, you know, we had hoped to have a goal setting meeting earlier in the fiscal year, so we're halfway through the fiscal year. Um, but we had a lot of goals, um, that we had talked about in our previous goal setting meeting as well as, um, some other meetings such as the, the, the Cullen Center Retreat. So, um, I was hoping that we could, uh, look at some of those, like have a chance. Uh, I mean, I was hoping that we could all do some homework, at least revisiting some of those questions, but I don't know. Um, did, did you have other?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I think it makes sense to say, hey, this is all the stuff we've worked on, talked about. But personally, I'd like to walk away from this goal setting and so it synthesizes that to specific deliverables we expect to accomplish by the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
And whatever's left over, we can, can take into our next fiscal year goal setting discussion.
I guess that's also true.
Yeah.
This, even though it's so delayed that it will facilitate the process next year, that will sort of be more in that frame of mind. I think we had hoped to do this earlier, but with all of the, um, a lot of personnel changes. Um, so I think that impacted somewhat, I believe, to schedule this.
It would be good to have a way, like a procedure and a, and a way to summarize, like, the, the completed goals perhaps into the town report. So like if we're doing this. If we're looping through this on a schedule, we should be able to feed the town report with what we succeeded with and what we're doing the next year, it should happen in that.
So I believe typically there's a letter from the chair at the beginning. Is that what you were gonna say, Mike?
That's what I.
Yeah, so that, that's.
That's a great place to get, it's right up front that said, this is what we've accomplished this year.
Right, so yeah, so, yes, to something said.
There wouldn't be a question about what's.
So goal, uh, like, I guess, revisiting to, you know, to establish which goal we've made progress.
I mean, I'd also like us to, at the ATM, provide a business update before we get into the warrants. And that's another place where you can actually, we close out our fiscal year goals. Especially those that are financial, you can, in my mind, it sort of sets the stage for the vote because look what we've done. So we're gonna do this, we invested here, this is what we got. Now we're gonna go to, now we want to invest here, you know what I mean? So I think, I, I agree. I think it's a, the year end.
That's, yeah.
Chair's letter is gonna be really easy.
I know, Mike.
Well, next year. This year.
Yeah, you, you had asked all of us to give input for the chair letter last year, uh, so I may, I may follow suit. Um, so that, that maybe is something we can discuss, uh, at this goal setting meeting, sort of what those contents will be. And Jeremy, did you have other, other thoughts about? I know you talked about it, you know, ideally in a goal setting meeting, that we would have an outside facilitator. I think we agreed that for this, for the purposes of this half year meeting, that that's bigger than we need, like more structure than we need, but we do need structure. So Jeremy, do you have, uh, input there?
Um, I, yeah, I, I agree that, um, you know, that is, uh, probably not necessary for this meeting. Um, I've reached out to two colleagues who have done this in other communities, um, and said, you know, what do I, what do I need to know? Um, so I'm gonna try to do my homework beforehand, um, to, to get myself prepped for the meeting. Um, to, to make it, you know, I'll be, I'll be the facilitator, um, along with you.
Fantastic. And then I don't know, like, as far as getting our, um, our documents together, um, what was the status on, like, did we have any sort of, um, like a write-up about the Cullen Center Retreat?
Yeah, David Colton sent, uh, like a, a really big summary of.
Right.
Kind of the output.
Okay.
Cause I still have it. It's like the oldest email in my email box right now. Um, but yeah, he sent it out sometime in September and it's, it's very thorough. I, I've been going back to check.
All right. Clearly need to revisit this.
Yeah, but I was awesome. Well, do you remember where we wrote our goals from the time before?
So why?
It's still on.
So we.
Yep, it's, it's still there.
Transcription and the exact, yeah.
Have pictures of it. It's a couple of years.
I think I would like, yeah, I would like us to, to have those in mind ahead of time.
So the only thing with goals, I, we can talk about it, but I, I envisioned SMART goals being the output, you know, measurable, time bound, all that good stuff. If so, it's very specific.
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree.
Believe, Jeremy, you can keep us on target with that. Our goals be measurable. So, so there's a little delay, so like, sorry, your smile was like, you know, a few seconds late.
The fun as part is watching you on the phone.
Yeah, yeah, I, um.
How much battery you got left, man? You must have just about out of battery in here, don't you?
Thirty, thirty-one percent, but the, the microphone on these headphones just wasn't, just wasn't cutting it. Um, so, uh, yeah. Thirty, thirty-one percent, but the, the microphone on these headphones just wasn't, just wasn't cutting it, um, so, uh, yeah.
Right, great, well, so I think, yeah, so we'll, um, maybe Jeremy, if you could circulate some, some things in advance of that meeting, maybe, uh, Katie, we can, we can talk about like what to circulate just so that we make sure that we all have the same reading assignments for our homework.
Um, yeah.
And then maybe some questions to consider, uh, as well to, um, set us up for discussion. I'll leave that up to you, but we'll talk. Okay, great, all right, so, um, then we have number thirteen is the ARPA update, and I know that we're no longer voting on, so that's, uh,
Yeah.
That, that era, that era ended, so what, what other updates are there, Jeremy?
Yeah, so this would be very brief. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to close it out since it was such a, such a important piece of funding for the town and towns all over the country. Um, so at the last select board meeting, uh, the board voted, um, to allow me to kind of take unexpended and unencumbered funds and, and crunch them into, um, into one fund to make up for, you know, kind of any general fund deficiencies or any general fund expenditure, sorry, there's no deficiencies. Um, so that happened, uh, we spent, we spent everything, um, closed out everything. I'm just trying to pull up what we have encumbered, I don't have it there. Um, but we moved, um, some building maintenance expenses, some, um, insurance expenses off the general fund, um, and onto the ARPA fund, which will just otherwise kind of increase free cash for the end of the year. Um, and then, um, the other thing was we had an employee and volunteer programs, uh, fund that we used to purchase those pins that we handed out at the holiday party and I've handed out to a number of employees and, and, and other dignitaries. Um, and that we used to pay for the holiday party, um, and the meet your public officials. Um, what we also did, um, as a result of the holiday party we had here, um, we bought a couple of things for town hall. So we've got like, you know, a coffee machine and we stocked up on some, you know, paper plates and things like that for, for, um, employee events here because we're always seemingly, uh, running out and stuff like, anyway, um, just some nice quality of life stuff for when we do, uh, both public and, and staff events, um, at town hall. Um, that ends up being, you know, a few hundred dollars. Um, so out of all the ARPA funds, not a penny was left on the table. Um, we still have money encumbered to be spent in two thousand twenty-five, calendar year two thousand twenty-five for the library paving project, for the, um, senior center, um, um, building evaluation, uh, that I'll talk about later, for, um, a park field lighting project, for senior center, um, lift projects, um, all, all still encumbered and we'll expend those down in, in, in calendar year twenty twenty-five. But we're all wrapped up, no more, no more votes on ARPA.
Fantastic, thank, thank you for that. Not even one penny, so like, that's great. You saw it, so wonderful, thank you. All right, uh, other comments on that? It feels like the end of an era, right? So many meetings where there were so many decisions to be made.
I did too. Free money is always nice.
Yeah, and then next, uh, we have, uh, the Cahill property.
Um, yeah, so the town received, um, a notification, um, certified mail to the select board, conservation commission, assessor, some, some other departments. I forget all of them now, uh, but that there is a, um, property at thirty-five Hartford Avenue East, um, which is under what's called chapter sixty-one A, um, status or in chapter sixty-one A status, which means, um, it receives a property tax break, um, a pretty substantial one, um, for being workable, working farmland. Um, there's certain acreages, certain production requirements and the calculation changes for all of those. But, um, part of being in that, being in that status is that, um, if one wants to exit that status and sell the land, uh, the town receives right, the town can exercise right of first refusal within a hundred and twenty days of being notified of a bona fide offer. Um, so the town was notified on twelve-thirty, um, of a bona fide, uh, you know, a fully executed purchase and sale, um, uh, with a private entity, um, from the Cahill family, um, to the private entity. Um, so the town put together, um, a working group of myself, um, conservation, planning and, uh, assessing parks um, to determine the viability of the town exercising that right. Um, so we're currently working on that right now and, um, we have another meeting scheduled for next week. Um, and the, the outcome of that, um, that working group is to provide a recommendation to the select board. Um, so once, once we have that, I will, I will circulate what the group's recommendation is. It will ultimately be up to the select board to decide, um, to exercise that right or not. Um, so we would have to, um, both get county meeting approval, um, and match, um, the offer with, um, you know, available funds, uh, within a hundred and twenty days, so it's, it's a tall ask. Um, uh, so we'll, we'll have the recommendation to you shortly, but, uh, we've received, we received a notification and one of the boards know we were, we were evaluating it from, from every angle from the staff perspective.
Thank you, any questions for Jeremy on that?
Got one online.
Got one online, yeah, Alani, go ahead.
Yes, just the, the working group, is that going to, is that an open meeting, uh, situation and when will those meetings take place?
Um, no, it is not, um, it is not, um, it's not, uh, public officials and it is not, um, it's not something that we need to have a committee decide. Um, so open meeting doesn't apply to something which, you know, uh, the outcome of this meeting is issuing a recommendation to the board and that's something that I myself can just decide to do, so I can convene groups of staff members to assist me in making a decision which I have the authority to make and that's not an open meeting.
Yeah, no problem, I was just wondering if they were, I, I would have attended, but, okay, thank you.
And so, uh, Jeremy, can you, uh, I guess since Lonnie has expressed an interest, when, when will you, you expect to have this in our next, uh, regular meeting, the February fifth meeting? Is that the hope?
Um, yeah, I would, you know, just because of the accelerated timeframe, if, um, if we had a recommendation from the group, um, for the twenty-ninth, uh, goals meeting, I would ask, um, if, if we can make an exception and put a non-goals agenda item at the top of the meeting, uh, just to say, uh, be, because if the, if, um, if the board ultimately decides to not exercise that right, town council has advised, um, that you should take a vote affirming that non-exercising of the right. Um, and that way, the seller doesn't have to wait the full hundred and twenty days for the clock to run out. The, you know, we can say stop the clock right now, go ahead and proceed with your transaction and they can just move about their business as normal.
Okay, so there is a possibility that we will address this question on the January twenty-ninth meeting. Uh, if, if the, uh, working group has gathered enough information to make a recommendation, is that correct?
Correct, I, cause I, I would like to, you know, get this recommendation to you as, as soon as possible. Um, and it's of course within the purview of the board to say, thank you for getting the recommendation in advance of the twenty-ninth, but we want to wait until the regular meeting on the fifth to vote and then you would, you know, be well within your, your hundred and twenty days as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about that? Room, we're online. Okay, great, thank you, Jeremy. And then, uh, so, so back to you, Jeremy, for that town administrator report.
All right, so let me pull it up here. Um, so, um, the Kaiser ambulance that we had, um, with the highway department, the nineteen fifty's, sixty's era, uh, DOD surplus. Um, so Katie did a lot of work on that and got an application to apply for a title, uh, from the Department of Defense. Uh, we, and then she went to the RMV and applied for and received the title. So we now have the title and we, uh, this board has previously surplus to the vehicle, so now we can sell it in good faith, um, to somebody who can, um, you know, there's a large, you know, collector and, and, um, population out there, there's affinity groups and things like that. So I'm not quite sure who's going to, um, ultimately, uh, want this vehicle, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get it out of the highway yard where it's not, you know, it's just sitting in the elements, not kind of getting the care that lots of its, um, peer vehicles receive. So, uh, thanks Katie for your work on that, that was a, um, a tough knot to untie, um, but we, we closed the loop on that.
Thank you. I want to see it, has roots, it's like this far into the ground.
Yeah.
Oh.
That forest is taken in.
Yes.
Um, I just want to bring the board's attention, we have a number of individual contracts with non-union folks. Um, one of which expires this year where the select board has the opportunity to extend. Another one is with the library director, extend for a year, another was with the library director, um, who that, that contract is between the trustees and the library director, not the select board. Um, so they'll be, I won't be in contact with the chair there, but they'll be extending that one. Um, and then in the course of my personnel and contract review, um, there's a number of non-union folks who don't have any sort of employment agreement with the town. Um, so not saying everyone needs a, you know, nine-page contract, uh, but there should be some, um, you know, definition of what the terms of employment are, uh, between individuals. They get one when they first start, but then year to year, um, that doesn't get updated with, um, all the non-union folks. So we're going to be standardizing that and all the non-union folks who don't currently have a year-to-year, um, employment agreement, we're going to, um, HR and I are going to, going to work on those. Um, we kicked off or had our initial orientation for the compensation and classification study with our consultant and, uh, all staff were invited. Um, we had it in this room earlier this week. Um, they have a questionnaire they need to fill out, um, it's due back at the end of next week. Um, and then the, um, Colin Feder will start to do interviews, um, and then write up job descriptions and, and so that's progressing as, as, um, as planned. Um, we're about to launch Text My Gov, so if you saw the little widget on the website, um, we've got a number of, um, a number of phone numbers, um, to be able to, um, to be who are obtained, um, through the post office. So we're going to send, uh, hey, everybody, here's the service, we'll send alerts to press stop to opt out. Um, and then we're also going to market, you know, you know, sign up for a select board alert, sign up for, you know, what, as we kind of craft it. So that's, that's ongoing, um, you'll see communications about that soon. Um, speaking of the website, um, they have a very rigid schedule on what we need to, um, keep, keep our, you know, I think June, uh, launch date, uh, online and ready to go. So, uh, Katie, Ellen and Town Clerk Ellen Agro and, um, Dan Byer from, um, who runs our website, um, on the day-to-day. We've been meeting with them on a pretty rigid schedule. Um, I, I really like what we've done so far, um, I'm excited to, to launch this. Um, and it's going to include a new agenda setter, um, which will, um, you know, make, make Katie and mine's life easier and, and streamline a lot of things for a lot of you, which we talked about at previous meetings. Um, actively pursuing a number of DOT grants with Highway and our consultant, Italian Bonds, um, for the Providence Street Culvert. So as those come up and we apply, I'll let you know. Um, the, um, there was a letter circulating regarding, from a resident in the butter regarding, um, the Paddock property and the plant, and the town's plans for affordable housing at the Paddock properties. Um, so I'm, I and, uh, town planner Jack Hunter are meeting with that individual, um, to make sure the factual inaccuracies in the letter are, are corrected, um, at least in his lines, it's not in writing. Um, so we're having a meeting on the twenty-ninth, um, but if any folks have gotten that letter, uh, I just wanted to, um, let you know that there are some, some things that are not entirely true, um, we'll be, we'll be meeting, um, with that individual. Um, on the twenty-seventh, we kick off the senior center and municipal building, um, evaluation study. Um, I've invited, um, uh, folks from the Mendon Senior Community Center Building Commission and Council and Agent Director as well to, to meet with me. We've, um, kicked off and enrolled folks in our voluntary benefits program with combined insurance. So some short-term disabilities, some additional lives, some critical illness, some additional hospital coverage, all voluntary, all paid for by employees, but we had really great participation in that. The, uh, a future, you know, that'll be a future agenda item for that. Um, the, uh, February fifth meeting, um, I've asked department heads to get back to me with their accomplishments for the first two quarters of the year. So in, um, kind of thinking annual report-esque, but, um, I'm going to give a financial update. Um, once we know Q two is all closed out and posted and I can reliably, um, analyze stuff that's in Springbrook. Um, and then I'll have some stuff from each department to say, here's what we've accomplished so far, um, in the first two quarters. Um, and then, um, just wanted to remind the board that I'm on vacation. That's when this meeting ends, um, through Tuesday, um, I'll be back in the office on Wednesday. Um, and then, uh, and I will see you all at MMA, uh, next weekend, next, next Friday, Saturday.
I thought you invested in some really nice artwork for your home there.
Yeah, thank you, there are field in and sweets.
Great, all right, all right, thank you, Jeremy. Uh, any questions for Jeremy on any of those topics? You know, we'll be hearing a lot more after his vacation. Um, so, uh, I guess future agenda items, so we have a few that we know about, so getting an update on the pavement, uh, study, uh, goals. Um, I don't know if there, if there's anything to say on that other than that's on here. I don't know what the meeting calendar discussion is.
That's for the meeting dates for the.
Oh, for the budget, budget, okay, that, that, as in our, our meeting calendar, yes, okay, great. Okay, so we'll be discussing that and then the annual town meeting date, which I think we're still waiting from the state for approval of the bylaws claims that we voted on at the special town meeting. So barring that approval, I think, yeah, we, we, uh, have to go with what's in our bylaws. Uh, Jeremy, any other comments on these?
Uh, yeah, uh, thanks for that context on the ATM date, yeah, we may be hemmed into the first Friday just with, based on AGO approval. Um, I'll check with the town clerk about that. Um, I had one additional future agenda item that got brought to my attention after the, after this was published, um, so there's no vote on it tonight. Um, but previously, so there was the, um, what's been referred to as the Denton property that, um, this board approved the, um, purchase and sale agreement for. Um, as a reminder, we have, um, one point eight million dollars lined up in, in funding, uh, two hundred thousand dollars from Mass Audubon, six hundred thousand from the Nature Conservancy, five hundred thousand in estate grant and five hundred thousand from CPA. Um, the purchase price was one point six eight five million, um, that was going to be reduced by an additional, I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars based upon what's called a bargain sale, um, which is, uh, the seller receives a tax credit from the state. Um, but the combination of the timing of the grant and then the fit, the application tip for that tax credit meant both couldn't happen at the same time. So we either got a five hundred thousand dollar grant or we got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in price. Um, so the purchase and sale agreement was executed or was, uh, approved by this board with the lower price, um, with the discounted price. But we're going to end up paying what the originally agreed-upon price was, which was one point six eight five million, which again, we have a one point eight million dollar budget for this project. But the purchase and sale is being recrafted by the seller's attorney and will be represented to this board. Um, we need to close by June first and it just wasn't, in order to be able to use the grant funds and it just wasn't possible to get, um, that kind of complicated tax paperwork done from, from the seller's perspective. Um, so you will be getting a new PNS. I say all this in such a kind of convoluted or complicated matter because it's not really a price increase. It's going back to the original agreed-upon price, uh, but we had the bargain price which was approved. Um, and then, so as we get the new purchase sale agreement, um, I could have, uh, Anne Mazur explain it as well, um, from the CPA, uh, perspective. CPA is the last in the batting order there, so as we, um, there's like a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars left in the budget to pay for, you know, things like the appraisal and things like that. And so whatever doesn't get spent goes back to CPA, they are, they are first in line to get their, to get their money back. Um, so it's a complicated matter, I wanted to lay it out to the board first before I got to you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, yeah, Brandon.
Yeah, I, I have a one potential future agenda, and this is something that Jeremy is aware of. So I'm the liaison for the Agricultural Commission, um, and that, that board or that committee is mostly inactive at this point. A lot of people moved away, I don't think there's been any meetings in quite a while. So, um, whenever I talk to one of the local farmers, I kind of solicit them to join. Um, so having some success there, so at some point there may be either an ask to send out, uh, you know, solicitation letters to the farms in town, like, hey, come join the ag comm or, uh, reappointments, just wanted to put that out there.
Right, and I guess relatedly, uh, I, I believe there have been some, there's been some interest in the Recreation Field Committee. Um, so I think, uh, we can look forward to an update about that and hopefully get that, um, get some appointments going there as well, so.
Um, I had one, it, I had attended a planning board meeting prior to the STM this past fall, talking about possibly looking at rezoning, um, over on the, uh, the Old Tap Orchard. The recommendation was not to go forward, but they did say, do, we did say we should probably, um, work collaboratively with the planning board if we want to bring it to the ATM. So I plan on pursuing that with the planning board if anyone else wants to participate, but there'll be an update on that at some point, see where we get any traction on it. Unless this board as a whole decides, we don't want to push that agenda topic in terms of changing zoning, which is the armut overlay.
Right, sorry, catching up, I'm like, yes, now, yes, yes, okay.
I plan on reaching out to Bill, um,
Right.
Soon, because we cut up before the holidays, we said after the holidays, but as a board, we should probably say, yes, that is something the board is supporting.
Like, yes, we want to get it back to the original zoning proposal or.
No, yes, we want to pursue a collaborative with the planning board to re, with the zoning overlay for the agency.
That's second.
Yeah, yeah, right. And then we'll do the work to get an article ready for ATM, okay.
So then, so what, what did you call the, we're talking about the property on like sixteen and North Avenue, but.
Yeah, the Taft.
Tap Orchard, that was, that was.
It's called. It's called many things, that's what I call it.
Yeah.
The land on the way down the hill.
Yes. Okay, great, thank you, any other, I mean, any other agenda topics that come up, please do email Jeremy, Katie, and or myself, yes.
Just got an email today, they wanted to, I don't know if I was supposed to do this during a public meeting, but Tom Maroli reached out. And he wanted to know if the select board would be available remotely with the General Bylaw Review Committee on one twenty two.
Uh, so, oh, okay, so that would be an additional meeting. So that, where, where, was he looking for a call?
It's one twenty two, is their regular scheduled meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
At least that's what I remember.
Oh, okay, so not necessarily the whole, not like a joint thing, but but a representative.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure more than one word.
Right, okay, so I think the.
Yeah, it's my responsibility.
Something happens up. I guess maybe you could see if one of us.
Is that, is that pretty, Tom, are the folks joining us on February fifth, I thought that was.
I think that's a separate question, right, and I guess that that could be on our future agenda items, right, we've heard, we, we got an email from. The new General Bylaw Review Committee Chair asking to present, to share some updates about their process. So yeah, I think that's February fifth, I, I think that.
They're still building a lot of structure to their group, I think they just want to chat about some of that.
Maybe set some expectations.
Yeah. And they requested all that feedback, you know, from the town, you know, they got a lot, so I think they might be. Wondering what order they should go in, how they should approach that when they come to talk to us. On the fifth, I think they're gonna just want some guidance on how they should collaborate with us.
Great. All right, so I'm, I'm sure many more agenda items will make their way to us by February fifth. All right, so, oh, which brings us to next meetings, right, we've already said this, so our next. Meeting is January twenty ninth, the goal-setting meeting, and did we decide where we were going to have that, we could have, going to do that down in the.
We were gonna do the police station.
Police station.
That's what I remember.
Police station? But we'll, yes, we'll find out.
It'll be somewhere on this campus.
Somewhere in Manhattan. That has the ability to do hybrid meetings.
There you go.
All right, so then, and then our next regular meeting will be February fifth. So, hey, we got to the end. So I guess if there isn't anything else, I would be looking for more to do during.
So move second.
Discussion, all in favor? All right.
Jeremy, have a good time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for sticking around, audience.
Thank you.